Well, but I've noticed you guys always ask for more thinking than might shave down. But all I've noticed is sometimes it hasn't been shaved down and you guys just must be high-fiving like, can you believe that?
I think I'm wrong with thinking that. You could ask any councilor how many times I've brought projects in, that I met with a manager, he said, "My client wants this." But you can't let it come out.
The policy numbers keep going up though.
My client wants this. He said, "You can't let it come out." Because you know what, it's not right here. Here's what you should do, you should knock it down. And at the same time, I'm not gonna say which clients. You can ask the councils, and I've said, "They used to not tell my client, don't tell them this." But you can't do this. You get on this, eat it down, and it's gonna be nice and hard and it's not gonna work. And I can tell you right now, if you ask one of the councils here, and I've said, "Why, I love land, I really love it, and I love seeing cities work." People say too much development. In our case, this, every city in town has to redevelop itself, period. Has to change. No city in town has been able to stay historically the same way. It's harder to redevelop it. I'm developing my points. There is a raw land, the job of cutting down trees and developing it. It's all already developed. So how are you gonna redevelop a town? Everybody would say, "What makes it raw?" And I tell them, "It's not raw. Now, give me a bunch of woods." And then I'll say, "Okay, you're gonna develop this." It's redeveloping.
Well, let me ask you this.
Now, mind if I say too much redeveloping at the time?
When Five Guys opens up, it's gonna be hard to park there. It's gonna be good for the people that can walk, okay? But it's gonna be hard to get there. Like, I'll tell you what drives me crazy, I'm a Starbucks guy, okay?
I love Starbucks.
That's just like, like, why isn't Starbucks where Grand Asia is? Who even shops in Grand Asia? What sort of money are they washing in Grand Asia? I mean, they're open like, three days for like, four hours a day or something. Have you ever seen a customer in Grand? Cause they used to be underneath, um...
Yeah, they used to be down.
But I mean, wouldn't that be really nice if that's where Starbucks was and they could have tables out there and stuff?
Yeah, yeah, boy. I'm a big Starbucks guy. You know, how many times I drive out of there, no spot, I just leave. You know, it's like, I can't get in, I can't park, so it's hard.
Well, the good thing is, the police will not give you a ticket for parking on that by accident.
Oh, really?
I haven't.
Oh, I see, I've never parked in front of my own skid.
But no, that, that's definitely, it, it's ridiculous. Ever since they put that light up, I refuse to go into the parking lot. Because now to make a week, you could lose ten minutes of your life. You could go in there, and because of the light cycles, now you're like a prisoner stuck in that parking lot.
I don't like the flashlights. And it's not, I don't like the flashlights.
Well, how about the new crosswalk that's right in front, basically? That's the big thing. I just moved there, you know, all the time. Cause I'm nice. I stop to let people go, but people are confused.
That red flashlight, I don't know what to do with it. Do I stop? I don't know.
I think it, what happens to your lights? I'd rather have them on.
Well, I think we're leasing that. Are we leasing that from Woodin Current for like, a hundred grand a year for that light? That's a special light.
No, I think it's, the way it's set up there, I think when there's two steady lights, red, that means you'll stop and take one flash and it's getting ready to shut off.
Right?
Yeah, little red, I like that. Yeah. Well, that's, I don't wanna do that, cause I know a lot of, a lot of like, uh, popway sections, they use that.
It is.
I know they see one of their brands. I've seen one of those used to do them.
We have bike lanes that just hang at ends and move, which I think, like, they have a sort of stack at the library.
Yeah, the bike lanes are kind of, especially in New York. Seattle, they, they're out of there after New York. Funny thing is over there, the people who use bicycles have paid taxes, they don't wanna pay the tax, but...
They should. No, no.
It makes it hard on automobile drivers. I'm sorry, we're big on environment, but there's so many old wires, it's not funny over there in Seattle. Of course, you don't forget frying pots with them too. Yeah. I don't know my bad, how much did I lost?
Which one?
The camera.
Um, the camera I got, um, this Black Friday, it was, um, came with, um, telephoto lens.
Yeah. I'm kinda looking for Sony bodies, I got two of them, no lenses. It seem like the bodies, just the bodies alone are over a few hundred, five hundred, a thousand, just by itself.
Well, you know what it is, they can't handle like, swapping or anything, rarely making a loss more.
Yeah.
Difficult.
But if they get a lighter too, yeah, you gotta be careful.
You get another minute. Hold on. Yeah, there'll be rain. Watch out, man. Watch out for homes. Oh, yeah. Just get smelt some shit.
Yeah. Yeah. Tried to block out with the camera, it didn't, it's special one.
Yeah, no, this was the one that obviously is, um... I don't think the legs are supposed to come off, they already come off once, I don't think I pulled it back again.
Okay, no one else speaks, he's got seventeen sides. I paid nine dollars. I guess I'm gonna sign it, probably won't be on the lot.
It's a swag, they can sip it.
That's the thing that he doesn't like, that's the thing that I don't like about it. Where you can adjust the camera. Other than that, it's a nice, it's a nice frying pot, better made than the other one. These things you got cameras, we do both video and pictures.
Yes. You know what, YouTube has changed. YouTube, with their editor, they won't edit anything over an hour. So before, I would put them all together, and I would, you know, tape them all together. And the editor, and now they won't let me, they'll still let me post, you know, if I can do it outside of editor, but this video stuff, it's, it's your computer big time. So like, that editor thing was like, huge.
Yeah.
That's for saying, you think it's John, he ate all of these white potatoes he had. He ate them all, I think he ate them all. I got ten thirty. Yes, the old ones. It's like, yeah, right, exactly. I'm telling you, I went before, I went down, and we ate tonight, I gave them chicken, I actually put the chicken in the baby. So why do I bother? I'm beginning to understand how much it's...
I think there's supposed to be another meeting before the council meeting.
I think that was it, they had the ordinance meeting.
The ordinance meeting was another meeting, it was at six forty-five, and then another one at seven twenty-five.
It's almost like by law, they had to have that public hearing. Clearly they care about us, but by law, they had to do that.
Now, that was about the old twenties, that was one.
That was just the one about the fifteen-story building.
Okay, where was it located?
Right across from the courthouse.
Yes.
The corner of, um, Dennis Ryan Parkway. And, uh, across from the courthouse.
Every time we get out of the car, I think it's like, oh, no, it's screaming, okay? Another one, I think it's, there was another one, I think it was not that working, that R14 or something. Let's not talk about the old twenties, they're so good as MMA.
Yeah, if it's R1 or H1 or something, it's definitely, um...
Good evening. It is now time to call for our public hearing, Council Order 2016-237, and Council Order 2016-238A. This public hearing is in reference to, they're taking an acumen for public way purposes in Oak Grove Terrace and Bedlam Lane, also acceptance of deed in 23, 238A, the acceptance of deed in the tax sale for a modern, independent side of Oak Grove Terrace, currently pending in the ordinance today. With that, anyone who would be interested in speaking in favor, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. If you do not want to speak in favor, you have a signed sheet in the rear of the chamber, you are welcome to sign in favor. This is relative to Council Order 2016-237, 238A, 238B. Anyone else wish, anyone wishing to speak in favor? Second call, third and final call, we call that part of the public hearing closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, Council Order 2016-237, 238A, 238B? Not wishing to speak in opposition, you are also welcome to sign in opposition, if you have signed a sheet in the rear of the chamber. Second call, speaking in opposition or undecided, third and final call, public hearing closed. We will be discussing this in committee this evening. Be adjourned.
This is the city council meeting for Monday, September nineteenth, starting on and on at seven thirty. Uh, if you, at this time, I would, uh, call the, um, call the support, call members, uh, the local members.
Councilor Kane. Councilor Paul.
Present.
Councilor DeBarnum.
Present.
Councilor Finch. Councilor Harris.
Present.
Councilor Lefard. Councilor Lee.
Present.
Councilor Bellmuffin.
Presence.
President Moon.
Thank you very much, Senator Lefard. If you will all please rise and join me, uh, in welcoming first, uh, our troop forty, troop forty-three, yes? Forty-two, forty-two. I know. Troop forty-two to the microphone. All right, and our, our troop forty-two here in Quincy is going to lead us this evening. If we'd all just take a moment of silence for those serving here and abroad, um, especially at this time of the year, for the holiday season, and think of their families and their loved ones who, uh, we know they are thinking of, so, um, and gentlemen, if you would please...
All right, please leave me the pledge of allegiance, I'm sorry. Please, uh, let me leave you in the pledge of allegiance. I, from the United States, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And now, to practically with me, opening the door.
This is a video video, any person making audio or video recording of this public meeting, or make friends with me each other, attention therefore advised, the separate quarters of presentations are being made, whether present by those present, and are deemed large and important.
Thank you, Senator Lefard. And the first item on the agenda.
First item is 2016 dash zero six nine, an update involving CP, update on the status of the city's corrective FEMA map, and Mr. Joe Shea.
Thank you very much, Senator Lefard. Good evening, Mr. Shea, how are you?
Very well, Senator Lefard, thank you for having me.
Thank you for coming to update us yet again on these never-ending battles with the, uh, FEMA folks, so thank you very much.
You're very welcome. The annual bureau, Joseph Daniel Shea, the senior principal of Woodin Current Engineering Firm, has been working with the city of Quincy on their flood maps for, for far too long. And, uh, tonight, I'm gonna give you an update on what we hope is the final stretch for the city's letter of map revision appeal of the June ninth, twenty fourteen flood maps for, in the council parlance, order two oh one six dash sixteen. This issue certainly has been a long-minded road. It began in the winter of twenty thirteen or twenty fourteen, when we quietly reissued some new flood maps, an activity that had been very routine for about a decade. Their maps would come out with a one or two percent change. However, with this new version that came out in winter of twenty thirteen or twenty fourteen, along the coast, FEMA had changed a lot of their approaches, their science, their model, and some communities were seeing twenty-five to thirty percent changes in the impacts of the map. That change gained quite a bit of regional and national momentum in the summer of twenty fourteen. And, uh, as I will go in to remind everybody, the city took some action in June of twenty fourteen, that was scheduled on paper to take eight or nine years, however, we're entering almost three years of activity with FEMA to try to get these maps correct. Now, we've received, as of two weeks ago, some information from FEMA that makes us believe that this process will be timed and included in the equal of twenty seventeen. Originally, in the winter of twenty thirteen and fourteen, the city had laid out a multipath approach to addressing these maps. Uh, the first approach was to do a citywide field, that will be the focus of our topic tonight, and the focus of our, our three-year effort. Uh, the city also laid out a program to assist residents in dealing with their individual parcels. And the city outlined a program to try to make sure that they were appropriately handling all of their flood protection activities, such that garner points in the program that FEMA discounts all of the flood protection policies in Quincy by ten percent, because of the city's proactive nature and coordination on flood control activities. Tonight, again, we're gonna focus solely on the first leg of this stool, in terms of the city's proposal. When we had worked to input some new science, some new data, to basically attack maps that were clearly inaccurate when they were issued on June ninth, twenty fourteen, we did some math, and we determined that there were about two thousand seven hundred parcels in Quincy that had increased flood designation, increased insurance costs. There were one thousand four hundred newly managed parcels. These are people who had never been in the flood plain, were never told they were coming into the flood plain, and when these new maps were issued by FEMA magically, they were now in the flood plain because of these new map allocation. And there were about five hundred parcels with no change of designation, yet everybody was looking at increases in their flood insurance costs. All of the changes of these new maps were along the coast, FEMA made no changes along Quincy's Brooks. So those people who were further up on the Carnes Brook, or Town Brook, or Sation Creek, uh, did not have insurance, did not have flood zone change, but they were still subject to insurance rate changes. Then began, uh, what was a number of meetings, I took before this conference, a dozen times, and then about a dozen neighborhood meetings. Uh, this slide is not intended for me to go down each, in every gate, um, but for some key milestones, on January thirteenth, twenty fifteen, FEMA approved the city's letter for map provision appeals, science and data. They approved it as compliant, they approved it as appropriate, yet today, almost two years later, we're still battling yet usable maps. So shame on me for assuming that an approval meant that we would then be moving into a phase where we could have usable documents. Uh, we continue to try to fight that battle. Um, another very important milestone on this chart is July twenty-second, twenty fifteen. FEMA had opened a public comment period, and, uh, there were total of forty-four comments submitted by people in the city of Quincy, uh, which was a wonderful, uh, success rate for public comment period at the federal level, and those several comments who's had submitted letters, I'm gonna guess some people here in the council chamber tonight have submitted some letters, and we once again wanna thank people for submitting letters, because that really threw the attention to Quincy, that FEMA's review team. Normally, they get the comments also there. And the days continued, on this long and winding road. Unfortunately, although FEMA had submitted, or FEMA received a number of comments in July and March twenty-eighth, twenty sixteen, FEMA had replied to a number of forty-four letters, and they indicated that the input from the letter did not comply with their appeal guidelines, therefore, it would not be included in the maps, which was incredibly disappointing, uh, from our federal-level government. Um, however, we, by that point, we did have their attention, and we were meeting once a month to review technical data. Finally, on April fourth, I came and gave you an update that the letter of map provisions would start to be issued, but we were given no deadline on when we would get the corrected Now, the dust is about to settle, there were five different dates when FEMA issued corrected maps. This part was very important because it becomes very confusing. The city appealed one single map, however, the city was given back five different snapshots of corrected maps. We were never given a single holistic map, that includes all of the changes, all of the science, all of the data that the city had determined. So the city has been left with effectively something that looks like a quilt, when you go down to DDW, and you were to stitch them all together. The other very important component about receiving five different corrected maps is depending upon where you live in the city. Your revision may be on one map, but not on another. Your revision may be on the second map, and then it was updated on the fourth map, so it's very important that, that people at home realize it's looking at the proper map, the most current map for your parcel, is critical. And I do expect to receive quite a bit of commentary elements, we've been all this with the staff at DDW, and we've been talking a little more. I can't stress enough, knowing what map your parcel is on, and what the effective date of that map is, is a very important piece of information. We do know from FEMA that the final map has been issued on December first, and will be effective April fourteen, and so we have worked to incorporate one electronic version that is all of the changes. This is a little picture of a quilt, and every time you see a different color, it's one of those different effective dates, um, showing how the FEMA basically released portions of the city, but they also overlap each other, so there's portions of house net, for example, that would be green, mostly green effective map, and then superseded by the blue effective map. Uh, as confusing as this map looks, this is the map you'll be able to go to the FEMA website, where you would have to go through and click on each of these purple bars to try to find out is that your house, is that your neighborhood? There are so many changes, that the FEMA website really is, is unworkable. This is one of the reasons why they're recommending that, that the city really log in to get single holistic corrected maps, not quilt. Try to mitigate for anybody who, who asked to try to go to FEMA website and click on all of these different locations. We continue to work with the city's DDW, on the city's online property viewer. For those of you who don't know, on the city's webpage, on the right-hand side, typically maybe you'll be screened or tuned down, from when you're originally logged on, there's a white rectangle on the right-hand side, says GIS property viewer, and within that property viewer, you can find your own property, and you can look up a number of different pieces of information about the city's infrastructure, or wetlands, or flood zones around your property. If you click on this white box, you can then, at the top, where there is a small magnifying glass, you can enter in your address, and you can search your address, and then for the purposes of this presentation, if you go down the right-hand side, you can actually activate different themes, and in this map, I've activated the twenty fifteen Quincy-proposed flood zone theme. What you can see on that map, the blue is a flood zone, and once you've activated the theme, you can zoom in to a high degree of clarity. And you see on the right-hand side here, to really pick off your individual house, uh, this is a house I happened to select on John Street, uh, for the purposes of discussion, but it allows clarity to see the house outlined in yellow. You can clearly see that the flood plain touches a part of its property, but it does not touch the house. That means this house is not in need of flood insurance. It is the house that you are insuring, not the property. So there's absolutely room for confusion when you have the flood zone on your property, but if it doesn't touch your house, you do not need flood insurance. You may choose to get flood insurance, the mortgage company may try to get you to have flood insurance, uh, according to FEMA regulations, you cannot. One of the reasons why we showed this map on the right-hand side for Quincy viewer, is because the map on the left-hand side is the best available viewer you're gonna get for people. And the little tiny rectangle is the same house on John Street. FEMA's maps are just produced at a level of clarity that doesn't allow you to know where some houses are in and some houses are out. The tool that's been created for the city's webpage is a significantly useful tool, uh, the city should be very proud of it, it's an excellent resource for mortgage companies, insurers, real estate agents, and most importantly, homeowners. But the difference between being in and out can be the difference between several hundred or several thousand dollars in flood insurance each year. You can make a much more educated decision as to whether you want or need flood insurance on your, your property, uh, based upon the data that the city's been able to produce. The viewer, uh, what we are forecasting is the final results of all of the map directions. This incorporates the map that will be effective on April fourteenth, twenty seventeen, and this is based upon parcels. We believe there's two thousand five hundred and thirty parcels, with decreased flood designation meaning improved flood status. Five hundred fifty-three parcels removed from the flood plain by the city's momma. And there's another hundred and twenty parcels or structures that were removed from the flood plain by the letter of map amendments, that individual parcel, that second path, the city's strategy. Uh, so we're looking at over three thousand parcels with an improved status because of Quincy's effort. I wanted to clear that at this point, we've had the information for about a week, these are parcels, we're working to get addresses. Some of these parcels don't have homes on them. Some parcels have condominiums, and actually might have eight or ten or twelve addresses on them. I wanna make sure we take our time to get all of the addresses proper, who has received the benefit of this work, who is out of the flood plain, who has an improved flood risk, so we need a little more time to prepare that information. So here we are today, the city is updating its online GIS viewer, the twenty seventeen maps, we expect that to be done early next year, there'll be a letter called twenty seventeen corrected FEMA flood zones, on that right-hand side. FEMA has issued a final public comment period, it was advertised in the big red ledger last Thursday. Uh, they are offering to... They are offering to, they're asking people to provide comments by April 14th. That is the presumptive effective date of the maps, because normally they receive no comments. And we are recommending that anybody provide comments by April 1st. If you're in Quincy, if you're engaged in this process, and provide comments. One nuance from the last time. FEMA had 44 comments sent directly to them during the last public comment period. They're asking that all comments be sent to the mayor's office compiled in a single package he sent to FEMA this time around. That will give us more leverage in view and view, to try to get the maps finalized. So I'm supportive of that. And the city engineers' office has reestablished counterhours and phone support for anyone who needs help understanding the impact of that parcel. The address and phone number and the hours are up on the screen. I'd say Chang Yuxian from the city engineers' office is with me today. He's been supportive of this effort. And he's done a wonderful job to deal with all the miscellaneous issues that are sent to the city engineers' office. If you go to the city engineers' office, they have all five letters of map determination. The quilt, one look at the actual FEMA maps, you can get them there. They've got the online viewer set up on the counter. So they can pull up your property right there, and you can work with one of the engineers. They have guidance on unique situations, such as you have the floodplain on your property, but it doesn't touch your structure, like in the previous example. And they have thousands of elevations you could hit on file with the assistance for people concerned with individual property. So the ongoing steps for the city is to continue to lobby FEMA to create a single holistic corrected map for its constituents and your constituents. There is a very massive amount of confusion out there because of the tools that FEMA has sent to the city that are not as useful as we would like them to be before. We'll continue to assist residents with questions at DPW and Gaia Home. The city will compile any remaining comments by April 14th and send in a package. And then unfortunately, here's the punchline, but we are proactively working with FEMA to provide data because they've indicated that their next round of maps will be out in the 2018, 2019 timeframe. We're bound not to go through this again, but the program is starting to lap itself and we're up to be done again. The next round is going to focus on inland rivers and streams. Hopefully, their chains to the coast are done. And now they will build the portions of the flood zone that they had in previous work. With that, I'd like to entertain any questions, councilmen, may I have a second?
Thank you, Mr. Shea, thank you. Yes, Councilwoman Thorres.
Thank you, Madam President. I've long been awaiting this update with Mr. Shea. I very appreciate it, and I feel you and I have been talking pretty frequently in the past few months, awaiting getting more information, and still getting more information, still pending. It's really frustrating for my constituents who have that, you know, they have a deadline, they're interviewing their flood policy, right? So that's the deadline that they're working for, and we do it by spending. And that's trying to get that information. It's really frustrating for FEMA to give us hard deadlines. And yet, every deadline they have is fluid, and they just keep changing, changing the dates. You and I started talking earlier this evening. It's like Groundhog Day. This is year three, we're going into year four. We started this process in 2013, is that correct? 2013, we're going into 2017. And you closed your presentation with FEMA's going to do this again to us in 2018. I mean, it's so frustrating when you pull up, for example, you have the slide of the FEMA map versus the city's GIS map, and how we had talked about, you know, from a jet plane, 50,000 feet near, you know, 50,000 feet near versus us on the ground today and day out, dealing with property owners and understanding the conditions that exist in our municipality. I do want to commend the city and our IT department. The GIS property viewer on our website is one of the best tools that we have. And one that we're completely grateful for homeowners to be able to see this data in real time.
So you alluded, or you referenced the latest map data. So post-it notes, the quilts, which is very difficult to interpret, I visited DPW, is getting loaded to GIS. So when would you suggest, or when we expect that to be complete? By the end of this week?
We are assuming by the end of this week, as I recommend people log on early next week. And if you see a map theme that says 2015 Corrected FEMA Flood Zone, unfortunately, it would be 2017 Corrected FEMA Flood Zones, thank you. You will know that it has been uploaded.
So when you said corrected FEMA flood zones, I feel a little misleading because they're not corrected, they're not official at this point. So to maybe let the, have pen names in the title, maybe write the title of that to just say pen names, so that when it's effective. Because what I find is the last data that we loaded was the 2015, August 2015 version. There's been changes in between. Unless you're finding the proper post-it note off the quilt, then you're not understanding your own specific change. And so this is supposed to capture the last three-plus years of updates that we've been working on. And I just, it's still not gospel until we hear back from FEMA that these are accepted, right? And so I don't want, or I guess for the least of confusion, we are telling the homeowner, go to the GIS, here's our resource. And in addition to the GIS system, the city built down, and we have our topography markers at every two, at every two feet, versus most municipalities have your 10, have each the 10-feet standard. So we've driven to provide additional data to the homeowners, to the two-foot topography marks. But this isn't for them to say, here's my accepted FEMA map at that point, correct?
Yes, however, because there's been five different puzzle pieces, or five different quilts, two of them are in effect. Two more will be in March, so that is the component where there is this confusion.
Assuming your bank will use you.
Correct. You can't get involved in the lender relationships. Check into DPW to find out which of the quilt pieces you are on. It'll help you if you need to renew before March 31st or before.
So if you're optimistic that your policy, that your property's been affected because of what you'll be able to see in GIS, if your, what if your policy's renewing in February? What's your advice for that homeowner, if seeing they're out, the bank's calling them in, they could pay upfront on their, their policy, and we're optimistic that they'll be out?
Right. Renewing in February before the effective date, or some of the, go into DPW, get a copy of the online viewer and a copy of the correctly effective map.
A screenshot and send my constituents, your, this version, your updated version, and need to provide this information. You had, you had mentioned, and I know it's been very helpful for a lot of people, the elevation certificates. And I think, hey, you've got the big mail envelope in the mountain, what they current, keep that aside, this saga keeps continuing. You mentioned elevation certificates being on file at DPW. So for those homeowners who put that envelope in a really safe place, now can't find it, we send them to DPW, and they have a copy of all of the elevation certificates that the city did. Those are on file at 55C Street, normal business hours, people can stop by and get that.
That is correct. When you purchase your home in the last two years, the previous homeowner may have had an elevation certificate on file. As long as you haven't raised or lowered the home, the data is still...
The data still exists.
One of the things that you and I have talked about as we've gone through this process is loanless. And so when we say there was 3,000, properties improved, so there's $3,000 on that map, on the citywide map, this has been a change. That's sort of a full loan up, but there's been a change with a reduction of risk or amendment. One thing that you and I have talked about with the administration is about doing a loan workshop. So let's hold hands, the constituents, and to the next level. Even though we're working to correct this map on broad scale, neighborhood by neighborhood, we want to protect that individual property. So I think what we've talked about is scheduling, having the elevation certificates accessible electronically, bringing in, we've spoken with the registrar of deeds office. So taking a copy of the deed, inspection services or engineering will be providing a copy of the season plot plan, the elevation certificate. And we'll do a workshop to help people submit that. We're just going to fund the FEMA office with individual modifications for all of these properties to, as, you know, probably a secondary corrective measure, right? Is that what you describe it?
Yes. Yes, we'd be happy to be a part of that, and so that was an effective tool during the first round of public outreach component. You've also, two of the primary surveyors who work on our project indicate they'd be available for that workshop to go.
So I think that's maybe something we'll look to get, I want the final version of this data available for people. We're looking at the last version of this map because part of what we talked to people about was, well, more changes are coming. So what you think might be happening with your property, FEMA, FEMA's, it's been very difficult because they're giving us all sorts of information. Things aren't aligning, changes are happening, no, no, you know, their process changed, changed every step of the way, from what we were told. Their entire project team, I hope it's on me that scared a lot of them, even congressional liaison, I get every single member of this project team has changed. So it's really hard for us to be able to get this project complete. So let's get a date together for the loan workshop, to bring the homeowners in, for the individual letter of map amendments. Because I think what's most important is we've done so much as a municipality, and getting these corrected. So you told me a statistic earlier about Quincy being number one in the Commonwealth for flood insurance policies?
Correct. As of Halloween of this year, FEMA produced some updates. And the city of Quincy has the most flood insurance policies in effect in Massachusetts for a municipality. So over $400 billion of protected assets and $4 million of annual premiums. Across about, a little over 4,000 policies. So the average policy in Quincy is just under $1,000.
The average policy, you're saying the average Quincy policy is under $1,000?
Correct.
In those, you know, but we have a lot in the $5,000 range, you know, a lot in the $25,000, $3,000 range. I would say, you know, the closest, obviously, the closest to the water, the higher the risk. But, you know, the velocity zones are probably almost $10,000 policies, right? So interesting, I don't know too many that have $1,000 policies. They would try not to let us call them. But the $25,000, they say, geez, my homeowner's policy's only $1,000, and I'm paying $25,000 for flood. So that's a, you know, it's a real significant financial impact in the area that I represent. I read recently in the Patriot Ledger about the delegation of social communities heading down to Washington. What do you recommend for our municipality, knowing how strongly impacted we are? I mean, Parkland's office has been terrific and very responsive and, you know, frequently in communication on this issue every step of the way with us. But what do you recommend that we do to bring our advocacy to the federal level? Because looking at 2018, 2019, to go through this process, again, I mean, I'm in a loss of words. I don't know what would be the, what I'd want to say. I mean, this is preposterous. How do you, how do you reset this clock again after all the city has been through and all our constituents have been through? So what is your advice on our next level of advocacy? Do we join the South Shore delegation? I know you and I have been down there. Leslie, I'm consulting with her, she'll group, she's part of, also working with them. But what do you recommend for our advocacy in getting to the delegation at federal level to understand these needs and raise this issue further?
I recommend to consider putting your weight behind lobbying for single corrective, correctly holistic maps. And some of the social communities have already become that effort. You are the, you're the most policies for any municipality in the state. You have the most money underinsured in the state, more than Boston, which is very surprising, but according to FEMA statistics, too. You're a heavyweight in this battle, usually use that word. And then also set the tone for not going backwards. You've got to get it right coming in the first time. Just issue maps and expect people to either appeal or just accept it. It's going to be cool.
And I think that's the most important message for them to get, you know, that each step of the way, all the work and all the effort we're putting into, you know, the science. A lot of this stuff that social communities have learned from what has happened here in Quincy. And we have been first in the, you know, the first one in Norfolk County led, North County as far as timing for this map review process. So, you know, we were a bit of the guinea pig, learning this update. And collectively, South Shore is hearing that the maps are incorrect. Here's the science that is proving what amendments we need to make. We've done this, we ought to plead our case. But in the meantime, it's not connecting for that resident who's paying this exorbitant, in some cases, flood insurance bills. And especially some of the low-risk properties you and I were talking about, kind of the neighborhood of Quincy High School, and some of the floodplains and the cost of the flood policies in that area, it doesn't have a coastal impact. We've done the improvements of the tide gates area. We're doing a lot of infrastructure work as well. I did one thing to note when I was talking with...